Great. Welcome everybody to the planning board meeting for March seventeen, two thousand and twenty-two. With bring the meeting to order six oh four. We have on our agenda for tonight, old business discussion and consideration of commercial development review ordinance amendments. Addressing commercial solar and wind facilities and telecommunications towers. So it's gonna be much of our discussion for this evening. Did everybody receive some of the emails that have been going around relative to? Okay, alright, so so that's probably a good sort of backstory for us to understand where we can start perhaps. Be my guess. And. I don't know, do you? So. And starting there. Maybe going back to the original question of getting guidance from select board. We did receive that information, I believe. Does everybody see that?
And so so that and also the question of. Net meter regarding net meter.
Right, because we did get. See, an opinion on that, right? So. Talking about that would be helpful.
Yeah, I wrote up something that's in the packet. And and also as a provider.
Yeah, we did get a narrative from Alex Wall, who. Participates next net metering at his home. And and he also provided the agreement and both of those things confirm. That any power that is solar panels produced in excess, what they use. Develops credit and if that credit is not used within twelve months, the credit disappears. So there's no financial compensation.
My concern with that is. The buildup of properties. On one property. So if somebody all. Property in Belgrade. At property in Camden, at property up north, at property. Somewhere else, they can compile all those solar panels in Belgrade. And still call it net meter. So they could cover all those properties. And one property. And still call it that meter. Like that's residential, so do that in a different manner. So if we want to agree on a starting point for commercial. When it goes into the grid, it's solvents commercial, I'll go to that. We can move on.
Right. And you know, Craig, I just wanted to say thanks because I know you did a lot of research on this and a lot of like digging into it and trying to figure out what it meant and some of the words so. So thanks for bringing up the questions and. You know, trying to find the answers. That's a helpful thing. Even, you know, it's always good for us to talk about that. So thank you for doing that. So um, if we understand that our direction is to work on commercial. Activities, right? I guess I would just ask this of the board.
Every day apart, it does that to me. I'm sorry.
That um, maybe we have an understanding of what commercial activity means, right? And and I.
Yeah, I don't wanna. To that. I was gonna say to that point, one thing we need to be cautious about and. I touched on this in the. Memo that I wrote to the board based on my research from CMP and and Public Utilities Commission. Is that there can be commercial and industrial facilities that qualify for net metering. And. And they can be quite large and we just need to be sure that how we define. What a non-residential solar energy. Facility is captures those. So on the one hand, you have what's considered a community system. Where fifty-one percent is has to be owned by main residents. But they're basically selling power to the grid and people that live, who knows where, are getting credits for that. That's, you know, the flyers that we all get in the mail, you know, like one a week. That's what that's all about. And then there's this other category where. Like a paper mill or and by the way, this doesn't apply just to solar. This applies to all kinds of renewables, hydro. Biogas, landfill gas, nothing like the generators they have up in Norwich Walk at the at the landfill and the ones up in the hand that they produce power with. And so we just need to be. When we get to that stage, we just need to incorporate those two categories of facilities. Basically defined the same way as PUC so that there isn't a loophole there for some types of. What all of us in this room would call commercial or even industrial. Solar facilities.
And in those cases, some of those other examples that you provided. They they are larger at times, right? And they produce maybe.
There can be up to five megawatts.
Yeah. Right. And then I so that's that's a great, great example, I think, or a great thing to be mindful of. Anthony in the select person. Discussion recently, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, was there a mention, maybe it's a good idea? That maybe we start at things that would be above that five megawatt?
Yes, that idea, well. I think maybe this was discussed in our last meeting, but. Or maybe it was discussed at the solar meeting that was held at the center crawl season last week that. Solar developments less than five megawatts. They qualify for some sort of tax. So there was an idea that was briefly mentioned during Tuesday select board meeting that maybe. In the ordinance, we should set a minimum of five point one megawatts. In order to capture all the tax dollars that develop in my fact. I have asked our town attorney about that, have not yet gotten a response back from him, but I also posed the question to the attorney. Association and got a response back today from Richard Flueeling, who is a senior staff attorney for the main municipal association. Does not believe that that would be legal because it does not in any way relate to land use. And so just trying to ensure that you capture the full. Assessment of a development is not something that it's appropriate for land use for. Rich Quinney, you may read read this reply.
Yeah.
Craig.
So five point five megawatts, how big is that? How big of a?
Two and a half times the size of the solar fields.
Greg, I found.
That's where we're gonna start regulating?
Yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
No, that was just a suggested thing.
Yeah, like one of those like board members.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if this is where you're coming from, but it seems. In the opposite direction, we want to be heading in. I don't think Belgrade wants to be. Of the location of large industrial sized solar facilities. And to prohibit any of the smaller ones seems to work against that. Ones, you know, smaller than five megawatts or smaller. I I wouldn't at the select board meeting, but the. The. But other comments by the various select board members were along the lines of, you know, we'd rather have smaller ones spaced out in the woods somewhere. You know, well, this is this contradicts that.
So this is what Mr. Flueeling wrote to me verbatim. If I understand correctly, the proposal for five point one megawatts would effectively prohibit solar farms with a generated capacity of less than five megawatts. In order to ensure that all solar farms built in Belgrade are fully taxable. And are not eligible for the current tax exemption for farms generating less than five megawatts. If I have this right, in my opinion, it would not be a legally enforceable provision. Because it bears no relationship to any legitimate land use. He had that underscored land use objective. Such as promotion of orderly growth and development, protection of neighborhoods and property values and preservation of the environment. I understand the motivation behind this proposal, but maximizing property tax collections or at least minimizing property tax exemptions. Is not a permissible objective for land use regulations. For this reason, I would not recommend that this proposal be incorporated in your work.
Again.
It is.
Well, then there's a. I left with this concept from from the meeting. I went, I came to a meeting on second meeting. And one concept that struck me and, you know, it makes sense and much of us and much of us. Thinking around with it. For instance, we have this so farms are gonna be like. Energy production sites. Alright. So. They have the right to contribute to our community somehow. I know, I guess that the incentive, you know, you have to wait all these things, the fact that they're gonna be tax exempt. Is to promote that, to promote renewables, which actually we should. And. That said, the concept table around on that meeting in that that stuck with me and I don't know how to resolve it because that's the way. I guess my mind works is that, well, that'd be great. Then I am an investor of renewables. I come to the state of Maine with plenty of land. And I created fifty projects that are four point nine megawatts. So fifty project four point nine, so all that money gets out of the state. And we don't retain anything. I don't like that personally.
But to be fair, that's a state issue. I mean, that's a legislative issue that we don't have any.
Well, it is an issue for us too, because I will ask them, why then you will come to Belgrade? Because you have plenty of land that you can develop to four point nine? You have people that will be crazy to either sell the land or rent it because it's only four point nine. So we are getting our community will be taken by the tail into it. So I there has to be a balance between those two concepts, between the concept that they have to be, the people that come here to invest in the stands. Have to be what we call a community friendly. Investor.
Yeah, but again, sir, I think that's a legislative issue that we have that we have no control. If the the only way that that tax exemption is going to change is if the legislature repeals the exemption.
So why is it we can all learn the ordinance as we can be the first to say. State ordinances, but on this one, okay?
Well, the I'm not an attorney. I'm just right with the attorney said.
But that was an opinion.
And and the attorney says that when you're crafting a land use ordinance, it has to be specific to land use, not. You know, what your what your taxes.
Yeah, but we need, but we need a starting point. So where's our starting point down there?
Right.
Well, that that really comes to the forward now with that.
It's commercial as soon as you sell it to the grid.
That's right.
Correct.
The the.
Yep.
I got something else to say about that. Commercial will be. An entity that comes in and is just selling, they're not consuming. And that's what that that's where we were going. I think George was going with the concept of residential of businesses that are gonna start producing to consume. And I I feel I mentioned this. Last kind of last meeting and I'll send an email. To. To Mr. Wilson that. I will compromise to make sure that we have an ordinance that will capture the consuming part of things. I will compromise that. So we are we're being sent to just work on the commercial one now that is not consuming, it's just producing. So.
So Rich, you had something?
Yeah. Was thinking, would say, where do we begin? I was wondering whether, rather than thinking about size and stuff like that, is it? Just regulate any anything that was have sailed to the grid, whether residential, commercial or industrial. And any commercial enterprise that's adding solar arrays to their facility. Such as said, Gagnon wanted to develop a solar field to power their facility. Possible they wouldn't be sending it to the grid. I don't know. Is it possible to have your own solar facility and?
Yeah, that's one of that's one of the industrial types that where they could participate in that metering if they wanted. The. So, yeah, the answer is yes, but the. The approach I was gonna suggest is a little simpler and that is simply to. And and I think we, as a matter of process, should formulate this into a motion and then vote on it as our starting official starting point for this ordinance. And. But that it should basically be all. Commercial, residential and other non-resident, non-residential of ground mounted facilities. Selling to the grid and regardless of size or electrical output. And, you know, let the market take care of the rest. I mean, nobody's gonna build. A real small commercial facility because it's just not gonna be profitable. You know, the market will decide where that. Break even point is in terms of between sides and but regardless, it would have to come to us.
Right.
Want to say this this way, Peter?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you want me to put that in the motion? Because I haven't written in a motion.
No, I want to hear it.
Okay, so I what I was thinking is that we regulate all. Commercial, industrial and other non-residential. Ground mounted solar facilities. Producing energy from from solar regardless of size or electrical output.
And so what's basically what's that means?
So everything that is not residential will be.
Yeah, so. If Gagnon's wanted to fill the pits up. So.
And have to come here. But if they wanted. If it was ground mounted, but if they put it on the roof. Yeah, because that that's at least up until now, that's been our focus in terms of what we've been.
Right.
For land use.
Yeah. You know, I I do think, Craig, that alone isn't gonna cut it. I think we're gonna have to define some of those terms, you know, in the ordinance to refine it so that there we're not leaving little loopholes or. And. But, you know, in terms of just a broad starting point. But more refined than where we've been.
And that's basically saying anything but not residential.
Right. Yeah.
Peter, no, yeah, go ahead, Rich.
I'm still so much. I guess I don't know if I got the answer to my specific question is. If, yeah. I don't know if the technology is there that they can do it, but. If Gagnon decided they're gonna fill up the pits. Yeah, but they weren't really. And I'm not sure the technology is such that they could develop a solar farm to produce their electricity. Not sell it anyway, but just power their facility. And I don't think George's they would cover that.
If, well, my hint would be that it would. Because I and and my opinion about that's changed frankly over time. Partly just to keep it simple and. I may recall earlier on, I had suggested there be an exemption for that scenario. But in terms of technology, I'll let Steve answer that. I mean, that's all about battery technology and where that may or may not be going, I guess, but. The but in terms of. You know, my thought is if whether it's Hammond Lumber or Gagnon or RSU eighteen. Or whoever town of Belgrade at the at the dump, at the transfer station. You know, decides to put up ground mounted solar. To operate some of the electrical equipment or the building lights and whatever. That is a non-residential use and should be covered by this ordinance.
I I agree. I agree with your first part. I just wanted to make sure we were covering that. I'm not sure the way I heard you, but that what your language would cover.
Yeah, it it doesn't. That's it kind of gets down to what I was mentioning to Craig, where I think we need to define some. You know, some of those terms we're gonna have to define to get to the level of your question.
Right.
And and it also, I think, will. Be defined, if you will, by what we don't examine.
Yeah. I I think that's eminently fair because in the example of Gagnon, if they were building another structure that they were still. And obviously it's engaged in commercial activity. They still have to come before you guys as part of the commercial development review process in order to permit that structure. So you could just use those arrays just as structures that are part of their commercial activities.
Yep, I I do not object to that at all. I mean, it seems to be very fitting to to the type of things that we would be seeing right now. So um, the idea, Georgia, you brought up. I think is a good one because it puts it at a commercial activity. I think, Craig, we've talked a little bit about before about how difficult it is to. Try to judge things based on output or, you know, the number of watts or whatever it's gonna be. So I'm I'm very much in favor of this idea of having a starting point to talk about commercial activity as selling. To the grid, if you will.
Or even industrial, which is a commercial.
Totally agree. Yep.
Which is may not be selling it.
And and we would have to come up with some more stuff, but we have to start somewhere.
Right, and I agree with that.
So so Pete, are you catching what we're talking about?
Meteoring, that meaning, meteoring concept is coming into play.
That, well.
Not with that.
No.
No.
Only residential.
That's only residential, right? Okay, so that. So. And you're. Mo, is he a motion?
No, yeah, we're talking about it.
Yeah, no, right.
So how was? How are we gonna handle that meeting for the residential this?
It's gonna have. You must, that's gonna have to be handled in a different manner, so. We can.
So so people may not have seen the email, but I.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so the so the select board is pretty unequivocal about what they wanted you guys to address. It was commercial. So. Not not that.
But what was it say?
Not net meter.
That they 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 don't want to entertain that at all.
Not for this.
Not not for commercial.
Not not as part of what the exercise that we're engaged in right now.
That is part of the commercial development review ordinance.
Right, okay. Alright, alright.
So we have to handle that in a different.
Yeah, and that the other question was, as Craig brought up last meeting, I think there was a there's a rumor out there, they're gonna put. Someone looking at developers looking to put a. Solar farm on the on route. Hey, I get rate eleven. Between the paved road and run down to the lake, right? And if that's put in, that's gonna be seen, you know, by people down. On the lake and across the cars cross the way on the south side of, you know, taking its call. No, so that's a visual thing. We're gonna get into that side of things.
Oh, yes.
I think that's gonna be a very big part of our discussion.
We're just trying to find a starting point.
Okay, yeah, alright, and the other thing was. I was. Listening on the radio this week where. And George Tyler Rick show, whatever it is in the morning, early in the morning. And they had a speaker on there, the former senator in Maine and the fellow that's in charge, so. A he he's involved in the forest business. You guys probably know might know who he is. Can't think of his name. He's down on the west coast, on the then the east coast, but he's a. He's talking about. Solar farms, commercial solar farms. Where they're putting fences around it and that stops any of the wildlife going through. The the big piece of land with the used to go and all that stuff. So we're gonna maybe kind of talk about that later on too.
I think we should.
Alright, yeah, it's gonna be essential.
Yeah.
Right then.
I I would just point out in our second meeting. On February, you may recall, it was in the packet, I had drafted a memo with some ideas of standard performance standards that could supplement the ones. From KD cog, because I I personally think that on their face value, they're inadequate. One has to do with the watershed analysis regarding visibility from the lakes and elsewhere. And the other, and actually, that's in KB cog, you know, so we'll get to that. And then secondly, one has to do with with the fencing. There's a type of fencing that most solar facilities. Use that's wildlife friendly.
Yeah.
Friendly available.
You're gonna say they have.
Agway.
Yeah, depending, I think that down at the legislature, that one of the committees there, there's a bill out there. And it helps me going through the work. Works, there's a big discussion about that down there at the legislature.
That's about the fencing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah, then I I don't remember off the top of my head what that type of fencing is called, but it has larger grid size wiring. To allow small mammals and birds to get make it through. I mean, obviously, if you have fencing, it's gonna prevent deer from going across there, but. It it, what I put in that memo came from Maine oil bond.
Anyway, that's politically a tight profile right now. State.
Yep, it's a big deal.
Yeah.
It is a big deal. So thanks for the comments. I'm glad you're kind of, you know, caught up to the thing I know came in a couple minutes late, but. We're we're all sort of at a spot. We've heard, I think, the suggestion. That George had in terms of something. So does everybody understand what we're trying to do, trying to establish a starting point? Knowing that there's going to be additional language we'll have to create and draft that will capture some things that we don't yet have refined. Right? So knowing that, I would entertain a motion. On this topic.
Okay, why don't I take a whack at it?
Okay.
People can tell me if I'm more here. Basically, it's not unlike what we were just discussing, but. To focus our work on amendments for to the commercial development review ordinance. On. Ground mounted. Commercial, industrial and other non-residential solar energy producing facilities. Regardless of size or electrical output.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Thank you, Craig. Any more discussion on that? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. So all those in favor of this motion, so Craig. Yeah, Pete, yeah, Sarah.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Yes, and thank you, Rich. I am in favor of that. So five in favor, none opposed. And so that's good. So we have a good starting point. So that's good, right? So.
Next, so so quick question, just a bold question of that. So would you anticipate that that? Language would be included in the purpose section. Of the amendments.
I made the motion mostly just so that we had a common starting point and I think we need to, whether it goes into the purpose or not. I think. I suppose it could, but. That was, I was, I was thinking that the next step would be to better define what that really means.
Well, and what I was thinking, George, is maybe put that language in the purpose and then in the definition section.
Yeah, that I'm sure that would be fine because it's the definitions that are gonna matter.
Yeah, right.
In terms of implementing the ordinance.
Okay, so one more time, can you just repeat that?
This is a test, isn't it, Greg? I didn't write it all that.
Yeah, gotta look up.
I got ground.
I gotta do it like.
Sorry.
Focus. Anthony, did you get it?
Yeah, yeah, so so this effort would relate to all commercial, industrial and other non-residential ground mounted. Energy producing, excuse me.
Solar energy.
Solar energy producing facilities. Solar energy producing facilities.
Didn't we say that was gonna be all renewables?
Regardless of size and electrical.
I think you nailed it. So you had a question?
Didn't, you mentioned in the statement, it says it's only solar. I thought we're gonna do this with all renewables.
No, well, I mean, we already have regulations for wind turbines in the ordinance. You know, the only thing that's.
I mean, I focused on solar, but, um, I thought that's sort of what's the task that we were given was to. Get solar out of the way, and if additional standards are needed for wind at some, we'll do that later down the pipe.
Biofuel or that thing.
Or, yeah, right, I, I mean, solar is the immediate. Issue.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what's being developed all around, around us.
And to get back to the moratorium ordinance, the direction from that is clear is to, solar.
I thought I was helping, but I guess I was not. I pulled it back.
Yeah, that's okay. Alright, so, so, so.
I, I may have confused you earlier, Sarah, uh, when I was talking about net metering for industrial and commercial facilities. And how that is really, in POC regulations goes beyond solar, it includes all those other forms of renewable energy.
But that's, that's a good point though, cause we'll have to come back and talk about that. It's gonna be very important, so. Alright, so we have a starting point, right? Rich, go ahead.
The, the idea of putting in the applicability section, I mean, purpose, assuming we have an applicability. Section, it may be a section where we say this is applicable to these things.
Yeah, right, it could be you the one.
Right.
Well, and, and my suggestion is, and I'd be willing to take a first try at this, is a rewrite of the applicability section. In the KB cog model, that would start with this, at this point, and, and, um. And elaborate with a definition of, uh, a non-residential solar energy. Producing facility and, um. Some of, you know, some other terms that might come into play, um, and then likewise. And as importantly in my mind is, uh, cause it also goes in the applicability section of the ordinance. Is, um, in that article three, um, that starts on page three there, um, you know, is. What are we gonna add to the exemption? You know, obviously we'll be exempting residential from this ordinance on the, uh, and will be exempted roof mounted. Um, and building integrated, which we've talked about probably, or at least I, those would be some of my suggestions. And that way we'd have something at the next meeting to go over the, you know, the devil and the details.
Right. Yep. So, so. I like the idea about going to the, to those things right now, but I don't want to overlook. Are there any other questions that we need to, to, to sort of discuss or ask right now? Because this is, this is the meaty stuff, right? This really sets the stage. So, are we good to go there then? We've seen people say, yeah, let's go there then, so. Yep.
So tonight we started, um, when we first started talking from selling to the grid mention, so are we omitting that now? Or is that gonna be also combined with this, uh, statement?
Yeah, I see that needing to be included in the definition of, uh, a non-residential. Solar energy producing facility.
Good questions, go ahead.
Yeah, that's a good question, because I think that is quite, uh, possible and it's been done somewhat widely. If the commercial or industrial company puts in solar just to offset some of its usage. It may not essentially sell to the grid, so. I think that, uh, just calling it commercial and leaving out the selling part. Might be. Uh, simpler and more complete. Any, any, any commercial business that puts in a solar system is a commercial system as far as. As long as I'm concerned, it's a commercial business. So, whether they're selling or not, I don't know that that's.
So you're, you're talking about they're producing power just to, for their use at their facility?
Yeah, to reduce their power.
Yes, right, right. Well, let me think about that, how that could be. You know.
Yeah.
Worded.
Well, I think, well, I think Steve makes a good point, but I think the fact that it says non-residential, that's sort of the key phrase, I think.
Yeah.
In there.
But what's the selling part of that?
Well, well, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. I don't know that you necessarily need that, as long as you emphasize this applies to all non-residential. Ground mounted facilities.
Well, I don't know if you want to get into this now, Peter, or not. I actually went ahead and drafted up something. Clarify my own thoughts, and I'd be willing to share that with everybody now, if you want to get into the weeds on it.
Let's. Let's.
You would?
Yep.
Okay, so here it goes, um, so non-residential solar, this is the definition of non-residential solar producing facility. The solar energy producing facility means any commercial, industrial, institutional, or other non-residential. Solar energy facility producing electricity with ground mounted mo- solar modules regardless of total size or. Power output, including but not limited to any of the following facilities. One, selling power to the regional electric grid. Two, that is classified by the Maine Public Utilities Commission as a community-based. Or distributed generation renewable energy project. Those are the two that I mentioned earlier. Community being where, you know, fifty-one percent is owned by meters and, and they get, you know, um. A credit towards their, into their electric. Three, producing, this is, I think, this was my attempt to get at your points, uh, producing electricity for use by a commercial, industrial, or institutional land use. Um, and four, generating and providing electrical power to the grid under a net meeting or. Meeting, meter, metering agreement with central main power in accordance with chapter three thirteen of the Maine Public Utilities Commission regulations. Again, recall, remembering that we're starting off with a non-residential land use. So I can read that again, or. Make copies. I mean, this has got some markups here, but. Be right back.
I'm, I'm kind of feeling that. Some of these things like, like this definition will be really good, and maybe it's just me, but I'm thinking if we have a grip on that. Then understanding what would be exempt would be a good part of a conversation, because it's, it goes hand in hand, right? And you know what you're doing, you define what you're not gonna be doing. That might be my only opinion about it, but I'd like to go there if we could, so.
Well, it, it, you'll see on there, I, I drafted up my thoughts for everybody's consideration on. On, on a possible list of.
We already discussed three, and those are probably some of the most important ones.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, that, only rush.
Yep.
Your statement from the beginning will blanket what Steve was talking about anyways. You, you gave four examples, but you're saying that any level of production will be covered. So that will be covered anyways.
It's, yeah, you haven't read that yet, so I.
Yeah.
So even without the, even without the examples, that, that statement alone, that phrase alone covers where you're.
Right, it's not solely facilities that are selling.
Selling to the grid.
So, any production of it.
It's what's called self-generation.
Self-generation, yes.
Yeah, you're generating, if you're, as a commercial or industrial company, you're generating for your own offset. Power purchase from central.
So the, the statement that he placed there is saying, any level of production will cover any self-generation. Thank you, Steve.
I got one for each of you.
Thank you.
I didn't write anything scribbled, it's too embarrassing. So, under article eight of the, this, I mean, we're amending the existing ordinance, so, you know, we. That's where these things would go, so we would start off with, you know, the section one in the applicability section, adding solar energy. Producing facilities or non-residential solar energy producing facilities, and then, you know, then we need to. Add a definition to the definition section at the back of the ordinance to, you know, flush that out. And, um, and so that brings you down to the bottom of the, uh, first page, uh, under article eight of the definition.
Yeah, I like that wording of self-generating facility. Uh, we can add that, that's adjective someplace in my review. You want to describe that as examples. As part of the examples.
Well, it, you gotta break it down into its components. One is the generation, the second is who's using it. And in that example, the key is who's using it.
Right.
Who's using electricity is the industry or the, uh, whoever, you know, the same entity, legal entity is, is generated. And that's key. As long as they're a non-residential use of this. I mean, like, for example, um, there are a number of paper mills that, not by solar, but. They have biomass boilers that they generate. I mean, at one point, the thought was. Paper mills were not gonna be really, paper was gonna be secondary, they were really gonna be energy producing facilities. That was the future of paper making in the state of Maine. And that didn't come to pass, but, um, but, uh, they do produce a lot of electricity to run those mills themselves. Burning everything from tires to bark to sludge.
Yeah, paper companies and, uh, maybe. On their own hydro power.
Right, right. Or in the case of Madison, they own. It's its own hydro.
Yes.
So this definition, let's see. I think we can go with this personally. I think this covers the item, the various items we were just discussing. And Sarah, did, you get a good answer about, um, the idea about self-generation versus how this is phrased now? Like on item four talks about, you know, generating and providing electrical, and. Sort of subsequent to that would be who's using it?
I think so. I usually like that wording better.
You just gotta remember, if we use something like that, we gotta define it, cause six months from now, we won't, none of us will remember what.
That's right, that's right, well, we might not be here either.
It's evil, no, but we will.
Well, it's.
Oh, it looks like it's covered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
I'm good with it.
Thanks, Craig. Do you have a chance to review that definition, okay? Okay. So, thank you, George, for providing this example, um, I, I think we should vote on this and, and. Introduce this as a definition that we can then include in going forward as a suggested revision. To this.
George made a motion before, and I don't know that, oh.
We voted.
We did, yeah, the other one we did, it was five zero.
That was conceptual, now we're getting down.
Yeah, yeah. Which we need to do. This is a definition which is important, right? So, I would entertain a motion on this definition.
I'll make a motion, um, uh, that we accept the definition of, um. Non-residential solar energy producing, um, facility. As written.
As written, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? A second, thank you. Any more discussion on this definition? Well, therefore, roll call vote, so in favor, Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I too am in favor, five in favor, none opposed, so we have at least a definition. Do we want to talk any exemptions at this time, since we're, we're right there, or do we want to go to another definition? Let me ask you.
My question, how much time do I have? But, this evening.
The night.
Huh?
Tonight, this is our agenda.
I thought we had, uh, the, uh.
No, you do not.
Okay, so how late are we gonna go? I have to leave early.
Okay, we have another hour, that, that's, that makes it two hours.
I can stay another hour, fine, and then. You need any votes? You, you're here.
Unless he's going.
Huh, you're going? You're gonna stay for the rest of the night?
Um, yeah.
Okay, alright, but, I'm leaving that on our, thanks.
Great, okay, thanks.
Here, my suggestion would be to, to discuss, um, the exemptions.
I, I like that idea, cause.
Cause it, it goes hand in hand, like, well, I agree with what you said before, if you define. On the positive side, and you also say what it doesn't apply to.
Right. So we, we've have a definition, we think we know what that means, right? But maybe by declaring what would be exempt would be a good, this is a great ti- time to talk about those things, and. I know we had three examples, did you, George, do you want?
Well, the, the fourth, and you'll see that, uh, in the middle of the page in section two, which is also part of the applicability section. Of the ordinance, um, for that same article, um, is, is the one that I didn't mention earlier and. Uh, and that with repair and replacement of solar, um, modules or other facility components. Um, but you'll see, when I reread this, um, I, I realized that I should have, I felt I should have added some other. Um, measures to that, not just impervious surface area, but also structural footprint or disturbed or impervious surface. So that if somebody has developed a, um, a facility and, and. Uh, and it's been approved by this board, um. They can certainly, uh, repair or replace the, uh, modules or any, or the inverter or whatever. As long as, you know, they're not out there with a bulldozer creating more disturbed area, or they're, uh, increasing the footprint. Of the, uh, ground mounted panels and that kind of thing, uh, in which case then they should really come back to us for an amendment. By just having impervious surface area in there, I didn't think it did it, did the job.
I see. So these would be things that are, we would suggest that, um, to include that would not. It would be exempt, uses not requiring review, so.
Right, and, and number one, maybe there is some explanation, Peter, I, I, I don't know, I, I, you'll see at the end there. Uh, I conditioned it on when a facility is located on pro- uh. Net metering for residential when it's on property owned by the, and that's a, was another way to ensure we. Uh, don't exempt and therefore don't regulate these community-based, uh, community, uh, solar farms.
Yep.
Because they're on somebody else's. Because they're on somebody else's property. There is, there is a couple of exceptions, there's a couple of non-trophics in the state, one in Boue Beck that I stumbled upon where they operate a small, relatively small community solar facility for residents of Boue Beck. But it's not on the property of any of the owners.
I see.
It was separate parcel property.
So, so this language here is talking about that which is on the land, land owned by that resident. And number two, talking about roof-mounted solar, solar energy facilities on any legally permitted non-residential or residential principal or accessory structure. Sure.
So, basically what I say is what I was saying. Number one is, we're not regulating something, two or three properties, and they want to put that on one property, is that what you're saying? We're not right, I agree with you, I mean, that's a different thing. Is that what you're saying?
Beyond to Craig, I, I didn't think of the scenario that you had laid out, I was thinking more of ensure that it's on at least property owned by the homeowner. That's benefiting from the net meter.
Well. I don't think they have to own a home, I mean, that's kind of what you're saying.
Or, or the residential land use, yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, like somebody could have a barn.
Okay, no, I was just trying to. They don't even have to.
I mean, there may be a better, I'm sure there might be a better way to word this. Here, Steve has it.
But I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's an important piece of the puzzle to say that it has to be on residential landowners property in order to be exempt, because many of the bigger, like up to five megawatt net energy billing projects, they may serve residential customers, even solely residential customers, but they're located on a large piece of land that isn't the residential. So, it's a much more common phenomenon that it has to be addressed.
Yeah, right. Well, that's what I was trying to get at, whether, you know, I believe it's you just suck whether it did.
Okay.
And you're saying that you feel that word is.
Yeah, I think so, I think that that would make it certain that you capture those net energy billing projects that are commercial energy billing projects where they're essentially, you've already seen these next amp mailers, I'm sure. They're trying to get people to sign up to become basically shareholders. To get a share of the output for their own, that offsets their own residential energy. They save fifteen percent, the people who sign up save fifteen percent on the bill. The developer retains eighty-five percent of the credit, but they're not, those developments are not on residential property, so you want to include them in this exemption. It's clearly not exempt them.
Right, which is good.
Yeah.
This is what we're trying to do. Dan?
Why didn't you just put in a size?
Well, we tried to.
Yeah.
That, that goes with what our, the lawyer said, I think.
No.
Add to a taxation.
I think what Dan is saying is for residential, correct me if I'm wrong, for residential use, maybe say anything above this is would not be exempt, is that?
Yeah, if you're, if you're talking, if you're talking, if you want to confine it to land residential use, anything over a certain size, all this is not going to be a residential use.
Yeah, the slippery slope, and the hole we dug for ourselves was that we couldn't come up with a size regardless of how you defined it, number of modules or panels or square footage that in some cases wouldn't capture residential. Because some residential are fairly sizable and at least the ground-mounted ones are.
Believe me, Dan, we tried to wrestle that for weeks. We got nowhere with it. The concept is good, I mean, in a lot of ways, it's just like, well, that would be a way to, you know, put a, a line in the sand, say anything over that, then you don't have it, but we found plenty of reasons why it did not apply very easily. Can I give you one example? If we talked about size in terms of panels and like, like physical size and stuff, what you have today is going to be antiquated in a few years and it would be a changing dimension that would meet that requirement later. Which then that causes trouble too.
I think so, what you've got today should get smaller.
Yeah.
Over the years. A lot larger.
Right.
It's a maximum size. Anything, it's going to get smaller.
Yep.
Well, that also plays into what are you going to be using the electricity for as we move into the future, more people are going to be buying electric vehicles. More heat pumps are being added as we speak. So, yeah, the size is going to diminish, but the use, conceivable effective use for residences is going to expand, so that's going to increase in that footage at the same time, the technology is increasing that size, let's say. Use.
I'm going to date myself, but this kind of reminds me of the Jetson cartoons. Everything's electric.
Yeah, exactly.
And the vehicles were foot power, is that, oh no, not in the Jets, I'm thinking of.
Yeah, yeah.
Just the opposite.
Yeah. Two different areas. Um, alright, yeah, so we, we, Dan, there's a good question, but we wrangled within, did not have a good answer precise.
For at least three meetings.
Yep. We need to make progress, so this is how we're going, going about it with like how it's being used, which is why we're going on, on this part right now. Okay, so are we kind of clear on the first one, that what's exempt or what is meant to be exempt by number one? If there are improvements on the wording, you know, I would suggest let's try to air it out now. If there's something we can come up with, that's great. Number two, roof-mounted solar energy facilities on legally permitted non-residential or residential principal or accessory structures, those would be exempt, they would not uses not requiring review. Are we okay on that one?
I think so.
Number three, building integrated solar power, including shingle, roof, hanging or canopy solar modules, windows, skylights or walls installed in a legally permitted non-residential or residential principal or accessory structure. That makes sense, I mean. Yeah.
The only one I've ever seen like that is in Freeport across the street from L L B. But I've seen pictures of where roofs are solar panels.
Then number four, repair or replacement of solar modules or other facility components that do not enlarge a non-residential facility's structured footprint or impervious or disturbed surface area. Did I use the right words for it? Because I wanted to make sure I included the other.
Yeah, I, I mean, you got the gist of it, the a residential facility structural footprint comma or disturbed or impervious surface area.
Yep. So that way, what's there does not require review. If they did want to come back and do something that would be changing the structured footprint or the disturbed area or the amount of impervious that it would.
We don't want to inadvertently exempt expansions.
Right, right. Right, exactly. Okay, so does that, these are things that are exempt, these are, would not require review. Are we good? Thank you. Alright, so I would like, I think we should have this documented, so I would entertain a motion to accept this list of exemptions, therefore the things that uses are not requiring review. Motion, Sarah, you want to give it a try? No, you don't have to.
I'm good with numbers, the words is different. So, I will move a motion to approve the section two uses no requiring review as detail in this document. And basically they say that will be for exceptions will be basically roof-mounted, all that is residential. And any possible repairs in the future that required any kind of touching was already approved in any way.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve, thank you.
All second.
And second, any more discussion on that? Therefore, all in favor, good job. All those in favor, Craig? Yes, Pete, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I too am in favor, five in favor, none opposed, so we have some exemptions. So we have some definition and we have some exemptions. Are there, I think we have more definitions to go through, right?
Yeah, whether you want to do that now or, you know, is whether you're going to spend the next hour working on. I, I think Anthony at one point, I don't know, maybe that was just to be talked about moving ahead in, in the KV cog.
Yes.
Ordinance.
Well, it's all, it's all needed, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, either now or later.
We've gone about an hour in, into this right now, so.
What are the rest of the definitions?
No, no, just those other three on the second page, or on the second page.
So it'd be community-based renewable energy project, that definition, right? Distributed generation renewable energy project. Net metering and development, those are the four. How does the board feel?
And development, amendment to the existing definition of a
Development.
Development.
Yep.
I, I added that because I'm personally concerned about this happened up in Madison, on the road that goes from Madison to Scotty Gigan. Where the developer went and clear-cut everything. And then apply, then apply to account for the solar farm.
So I would ask the board, do you want to tackle those four definitions right now? Or would you like to get into the KV cog template? Because we do, we need to do all of it, does, in some ways it doesn't matter. But I'd like to make sure we at least give some time to the KV cog template and make some progress there.
If we don't do this tonight, then it just needs to go into the parking lot.
Yeah.
Be put on, you know, hold for when we get the other.
Yeah.
You guys are on a roll and we got it right here, we might as well go ahead.
That's right, I agree.
I'm up for it, if you guys are.
The other thing is, first, you're basically.
Well, yes, I just really liked the way that George did that word, you know, if the state statute changes, then this, this keeps up with the state statute. And so my only question in that regard, George, is do you think there's any likelihood that the net metering definition routine might change?
I have no idea.
So, and so, I mean, again, I think it's really smart, the way you did the first two, just to meet the definition, state statute. I wonder if with net metering, you might do the same sort of thing by just saying net this net energy billing as defined by the main public utility commission and leave it at that, so, so any changes in the future.
Yeah.
Capture in that sort of way.
That whole chapter is about only one subject, and that is net meter. So.
And I mean, obviously you and Richard have a better understanding than the rest of us about the likelihood that, that, that's where regulation.
Well, Dan might. He's the one that writes the laws, not us.
Find a way to write this law. A lot stricter.
Because usually rules change in response to changes in legislation.
Right. So, let's tackle these right now, shall we? Let's go through them. So we've got the community-based renewable energy project definition, community-based renewable energy project is a solar energy producing facility which meets the definition in state statute titled thirty-five A subsection thirty-six oh two of a community-based renewable energy project. I see no reason to edit that whatsoever. This is clear, as it can be. And we're, and it's referencing state statute, like Anthony said, should that change, we're already referencing that statute. This is genius.
That sounds good to me, that was, we're not reinventing the wheel.
Let's not, right? Alright, so do we have agreement to move on to the next one? Are we good on that one? Next one, very similar, distributed generation renewable energy project. Distributed generation renewable energy project is a solar energy producing facility which meets the definition in state statute type of thirty-five A subsection thirty-two oh nine A of a distributed generation renewable energy project. Same concept applies, referring to state statute, we're good to go, this is the way we should be doing things every single day. In my mind. Um. Alright, so we're being very efficient on these two. How about net metering? We had some discussion, Anthony, on this one.
As I read it more, I mean, I guess, I guess if the legislative changes check, three thirteen, it'd be no different than if they changed title thirty-five A subsection thirty-two oh nine A, so I think, I think, I think the goal there.
I, I was not aware that this chapter three thirteen was all about net metering, I'm sort of glad you mentioned that. I mean, if it's that focused and over time and there are adaptations or changes within, then we still have it captured here.
I mean, the terminology the P U C uses is net energy billing, but, you know, you put it into English that most of us can relate to, I thought this would help to do that.
Yep, it does. So are there any recommendations or any concerns about that net metering definition as written right now? If, if not, let's move ahead. Then the last one, the definition for development. Any man-made changes to improved or unimproved real estate, including, but not limited to buildings or structures, mining, dredging, and then this is the new stuff, right, George?
Yeah, they underline this, the possible new language or additional language.
Which includes the, these words, cutting and clearing of vegetation, grubbing and stump removal, grading, paving, excavating or drilling operations, period.
What's grubbing mean?
Moving up roots in the stomps. You ever seen a bulldozer with a big grubby hole behind it?
This, this is only, excuse me. This is only a mark, this is just.
Yeah, yeah. So Pete, you've probably seen some of that equipment, but didn't know it was called that.
Okay.
It's my guess.
Now, can we go back to the net metering?
Sure.
Should we added the name of chapter three thirteen? It, it comes as to chapter two thirteen, the name of it is customer net energy bill. So I'm going to put in parentheses after the chapter three thirteen.
Be easily done. I don't have it right off the top of my head, what.
I just, I just Google it and, and pull it up, it's right here.
The almighty Google came back with some stuff, which is good, yeah, thank you. The almighty Google came back with some stuff, which is good, yeah, thank you.
So that's the name of chapter three thirteen, is customer net energy bill. So I don't know, we can put in parentheses or.
You just offset it with commas, just say title.
Do you?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the usual protocol.
Yeah, very good, thanks, sir.
No problem, thank you.
And it's being very explicit in here, we like that. Alright. Um, so let me ask the board this, are there any suggestions to change any of these four definitions that we have so far? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept these four, four definitions for us to include. Let's take a crack at it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the four definitions presented this, this evening's meeting. George regarding community-based renewable energy project. Distributed generation renewable energy project. Net metering and development.
Thanks, Pete. Do you have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, roll call. Craig? Pete?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
I too am in favor, five in favor, none opposed. Thank you, George, for those definitions that will help us immensely. When we get into the weeds, we'll have to conduct these, I'm sure, right? That's, that's gonna happen.
That's the problem.
That's the problem. Yeah, I know, it always takes time. Alright. Anthony, can solar KV cog, can we go through that?
Yeah, I, I just wondered, Peter, since you guys have made some really mean decisions here, if backtrack, do we need to start with section one, the purpose, and just make sure that that what we previously agreed on isn't in sort of conflict with what's been done tonight?
Let's avoid conflict in wording there, right?
So, I mean, I mean, as a, for instance, purpose starts off citing things for utility scale solar facilities. And I think that's not a term that we, at least what I've gathered here is that you would send use in this ordinance, my, right or wrong about that?
That's a good question, because right now, we're not talking about.
We're not talking about utility scale, I mean, we're talking about non-residential.
Right, right, we'll, we'll have to change that language throughout. And the other thing to keep in mind is this is going to be added to the existing portion of the ordinance that deals with specific land uses.
Yeah, I think this will be section five.
Yes. Right, so as we worded, you know, sort of in the back of our minds, but, but your point well taken, Anthony. Is, yeah, so, I mean, right from the get-go, obviously, we're not going to be talking about terminology that KV cog did of utility scale solar facilities, it will be non-residential solar energy producing facilities.
Yeah, so in fact, I just scratched that out on the title here, just scratch out utility scale adds. And they just had the word producing.
Yeah. And place else it appears.
Yeah, so maybe that's, that's what we use instead of is non-residential solar energy producing facilities.
But it's all consistent with the definition.
Yeah, right.
Non-residential solar producing facilities.
Yes, solar energy, yes, producing.
N R S E P F.
Yes.
I'm glad we shortened that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just kidding. Alright, yeah, great point, though. So Anthony, so starting at the beginning, yes.
Yeah, and so even paragraph A there, just the same sort of change.
Right. So, so scratch the USS energy facilities there and put in the other stuff. But conceptually, tho- those other four things, so all five things still apply, right? Hi, Steve, go ahead.
Comment, I'm going to be using this term. Is the word producing necessary there, non-residential solar energy?
Does it make a better acronym, though?
Well, I'm not sure, N R S F, that one less letter.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah. Let's not.
Where's that? Solar energy producing.
Yeah. So I think the, the short answer is, I think, until we change the definition, the answer is yes, we need producing.
The webs we weave.
Alright, so Anthony, starting at the beginning.
Yes, so just looking for this, so we would just need to change the name of that.
Yep.
And in paragraph C.
Yep.
And, and otherwise, I think everything else is fine. It's still, I think about all the rest of the.
Yep.
You trying to correct this? And so I, I don't see any need to change section what, what we would call section B authority. So, so George had created an applicability section. Oh, he said he was gonna craft something up. Just put a star next to this.
Well, we what I crafted is what you voted on.
Right, but, okay, so, so the applicability, so, so this is what you think?
Yeah, so that would go into the body of the ordinance, the applicability section for the entire ordinance on page three of the full ordinance.
So basically.
Oh, so, so, so the applicability, you're suggesting then in section one, paragraph D, just adding solar
Yeah.
Facilities.
No, or non-residential, I would add non-residential.
So now we're looking at George's, what George has crafted.
And that's gonna go on right here, we're gonna take out all this stuff on article three, section two.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Oh, that's not, uses not required.
Yeah, so that would be added to, on page four, to G on the existing.
There we are, section three.
I'm referring to the existing ordinance. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because the language that George developed would be like to plunk into our.
Yeah, right, because, again, keeping in mind that we're amending an existing ordinance.
And the way the template is designed, it's more like creating a new.
Yeah, standalone.
Stain, this is not that.
Right.
Right.
So, so looking at the KV cog template, previously under applicability, paragraph A, we just scratched out the person. We weren't going to use that. But we were planning on using the second sentence. Well, you know what? Yeah, the second sentence. And I wonder, does, does that still apply from the KV cog?
On A?
Yes, so as soon as that begins to create any physical expansion. Change the, the name of it again. Well, that, that last sentence, we certainly did, of things that would be exempt, the routine maintenance or replacement. Is everyone following this?
Yes, yes. No, no. Because what you're asking is, does this sentence, any, that begins with any physical expansion, blah, blah, blah. It, does it still have a place in, in what we're trying to do?
Right.
And in my mind, the answer is yes, even though we say the kind of what is exempted, we kind of highlight the opposite in, in the, under the uses not requiring review part. I think it's okay to put that in to see what's applicable.
Yeah.
So I haven't written down that any physical expansion. I've got a narrow point down on this, and we're just gonna put this in section A one or sixteen.
I have section. Maybe my handwriting is just sloppy, I have section nine one.
Yeah, I I could go either way, I, I mean, if we repeat have a second applicability section, there's always the risk that it contradicts the one in the main body of the, that we just approved.
Why, Steve, you're saying?
I, I think we can. Yeah, the whole applicability section, unless there's something there that.
So George, I mean, you got your, your book there in front of you, section nine point one. Does that sentence seem, seem like it would fit into that? So this Oh, did you say sixteen?
Nine point one has to do with revisions to an approved plan.
And that's why we were just gonna include any physical expansion and reconfiguration.
Oh, this is what we've discussed in the past, I didn't write it down, okay, I'm sorry, you're ahead of me. Yeah, I I, I think that has value to, you know, if somebody is gonna expand a facility, that it tells them how to do it. So we think that's still my, my take on it.
Or in the, applicable, but in section nine point one.
Yeah.
Okay. And what about the last sentence, but since, since the the exemptions you guys have already approved, is that something that that we need?
Alright, you're talking B?
I'm talking about the, the last sentence of, of A, routine maintenance or replacements do not require.
Which, which document are we on?
Where, where they have it labeled section three applicability.
Yeah.
Paragraph A, that last sentence.
Oh, routine maintenance, or, yeah, I don't think we need that.
Okay, I, I agree.
I, I would agree.
And then we previously decided we, to get rid of paragraph B altogether, and I think
Yes, I believe so. And next, we had definitions. And they have, what, five definitions?
Yeah, so I think we
Do the easy stuff for.
Yep.
My question is, why not move all these definitions into the existing definition section in?
That would be.
Article eight.
I totally agree, we should.
So I had, I had a note to include these in article eight.
Okay, we talked about that before, maybe that's why it's written on my draft.
Could be, and so we don't currently have in our definitions, the, the first four there, right? We don't have those defined in our ordinance, right? We don't have, okay, so that means we need him, so let's.
Well, I have a note on residential dwelling structure. Use the same definition that we have in the shoreline zoning law.
Ooh, yeah, we talked about that before, Rich, I think you brought that up.
Yeah.
You ought to be consistent, sure, so.
There is a difference in the definitions, it's pretty fine, because this is seems very similar.
Well, even if you use unit.
Well, and, and in fact, you know, what's odd is, if they say residential dwelling structure, but in the body, they use residential dwellings.
Right.
So I would go with dwellings. But I think it's just a matter of going to the shoreline zoning ordinance and plucking out of there.
Yep, agreed.
And then we previously, I just also made a note the transfer of ownership, that, that definition right there is the same as state law, so it should be good there.
Okay. Thanks. We're going to admin and enforcement?
Yeah, and just one final note I've made under definitions, if that, we will need a definition decommissioning at some point. And so, but I think someone said there's a definition of practice farm limit entitled thirty-five A, so I've got the subsection. So, so I'll look that up and.
Yeah, and state law has a definition of decommissioning.
Maybe that's what you think that's what it is. Oh, good idea, yeah, just like we did previously.
I have another comment as well.
Oh, okay.
Rated nameplate capacity, I don't know why they've chosen to use the DC wattage here. I would suggest changing it to AC.
Yeah.
That is really what's delivered to the grid. The DC power is inverted into AC power, that's what's metered, that's what's used in the commercial transaction.
Okay. So where we go in E on the definitions?
So we're gonna go to AC? Okay. Yep. Okay, so are we on admin and enforcement?
Yeah.
So.
In that first paragraph A there's much that could be deleted from that, I believe. Or, and, and some needs to be changed, so, starting with, in the second line, rather than site plan or review, we put commercial development review ordinance, or review ordinance. Then further on that same line, we strike sections Roman numeral two through five and add articles one through eight. Because that's how it's referenced in the current ordinance. And then, so, and then the rest of the sentence is fine. And in that paragraph, I think everything other than the very last line could be deleted with, in case of a conflict, the district provision shall apply, which is just a basic rule of law anyway. But leaving that.
So George, what you're saying is just strike the second sentence altogether.
Correct, that's another way of putting it, that's a lot simpler.
That can work. That can work, right? And so it would read, this ordinance will be administered, administered as an additional level of review, blah, blah, blah. And that would go into our article four, admin and enforcement somewhere. Because currently, just I'm just talking logistics, Anthony.
Yeah.
Right, because section one of this article talks about the planning board, two is a code CEO, three is non-res development review permits. I'm not sure where this part would go.
So, yeah, I
Me maybe.
It might be just easier to leave it in this solar section. And but I I think it needs one more tweak rather than it's starting out with this ordinance, it would be this section.
Oh, I see.
Please, what do people think about that?
Thank you. Have a great night. Thanks for attending.
Don't forget your jacket.
So if we put this section in the solar section, presumably it would be just later on after some other stuff. Right, so it'd be later on. Okay, that can work and make it simpler.
Yeah.
Um in in that vein, permit required, we need that permit. Send admin. But we already talked about it. Correct me if I'm wrong. Did we already talk about applicability? And what?
Exclusions.
Yeah, so so in applicability, we, I mean, we did add the establishment of a new non-residential solar energy producing facility.
This could be deleted.
Yeah, I I would think so. Let's so if that were the case, then we're on to specific application requirements. So this again will be a section thing that will be specific to solar. Be specific to NRSPs. So if that were the case, would we strike site plan review ordinance, first of all? Yeah. And then the proper reference to the that USSF, but the other one. NRSPs.
Well, since the
Oh.
Since paragraph A makes a reference to order of select minimum change of the select persons, since we have one of those.
Hey, hey.
Let's take a look at that. Way in and see what's bad. As far as possible.
So Anthony, we thinking to take the recommendation that came from the select persons meeting the other night to be in place of A in the template?
Are you talking about the the paragraph that begins with an additional permit slash technical? No, I think I think to me, Peter, what that says is that and so assuming that this ordinance passes for these changes pass, then at some point in the board of select persons is going to have to set that fee at that time. And then on an annual basis, overview that should be higher or lower.
This way it's worded right now is not only a permit fee, but a technical review fee. So does this? Is this the money that would fund? For example, an engineered assist the planning board or?
I think so. So remember, the latest committee had recommended to you guys that that one of the requirements should be that the applicant has to or that the applicant has to pay for an independent third party engineers. I think that's I think you're right towards that. That's referring to maybe and maybe maybe clear that that's.
Yeah, I I I think we do.
I do too. Yeah, we need to be clear.
Good, because I I just want to remind everybody that we actually in the body of the existing ordinance have language that allows us at our option, playing words option, to hire hire consultants and charge the applicant. We've never chosen to do so. I see this is different in that it would be routine rather than off at the board's option. Is that was that the intent that that seemed to be what I took from watching the tape of this like board meeting?
Yes. I know I know this project, there's a lot of concerns. Hire consultant. Down. They'll bring up water, but once you clear up all those trees. Yeah. Engineer studies their accounts, so.
Yeah, I mean, I personally agree with that because none of us are subject experts on this board. And that relate to this. And, you know, and and that became painful in the course of reviewing the bright side. Boat repair application, just because we were at, you know, we were getting conflicting information from different parties on their stormwater management and fosters runoff. And unfortunately, you know, we weren't able to get the kind of advice we needed from D P in a timely manner.
Yeah, so so I think then the question is, is what's in the order sufficient or or do you want it to be stronger where it is required? These particular types.
I I personally prefer the latter myself.
And now we go into a stronger wording into it, but I'm missing something.
Well, it's what I would envision and what I took from the way the latest committee worded it and the discussion at the select board is that an application would come in. As part of that application, a fee would be charged to the applicant that would allow the town. And maybe, you know, there's a number of ways to skin this cat, but either have somebody on retainer or whatever to hire an engineering consultant to help with things like the stormwater management plan review, the fosters plan review, other technical aspects of, you know, the design of street crossings, that that kind of thing. Because
And this is only pretend to the solar.
If we only included it here, yes.
So my question is, if if the applicant is going to be paying for the consultant fees, is the applicant going to choose a consultant?
No, the the town chooses.
I'm good now.
I mean, it would be, it's no different really than the town attorney helping us when we have legal questions that come up in the course of reviewing an application. In this case, it's just focused at the technical engineering and other aspects of the and you're an engineer, but you know, the rest of us aren't and 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 I don't believe any of us are experts in stormwater management calculations and.
That's not my expertise either.
And and so to be clear, so the current ordinance at the overarching level has language about how the planning board may at its discretion retain. But if we're going to focus on just having this stronger less latitude sort of thing focused on the solar part, then that would be in just the solar section.
I mean, this will, these will be the largest project, commercial projects in scope that you know, we haven't seen anything like what today, you know, I mean, absent somebody proposing a major industrial complex or or something of that nature, large warehouse complex.
Okay, so I'm I I I wonder if we can simply take the language that currently exists in the ordinance and change may to will or shall.
Think it comes down to whether you wanted to apply to all developments coming before the.
No, 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 and I'm talking I'm talking about taking taking what's in there right now.
Oh, and 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 copying it.
Yes, just, yeah, copy and paste and just change may to.
Yeah, I don't know without looking at it.
Getting back to what Pete said earlier, don't reinvent the wheel. Vision language. The tense of that.
Right, says page eleven. Five five B.
Yeah, that's it.
Yep. Yeah. Certainly. So currently, the way that that reads would be this, the planning board may at its discretion retain independent technical or legal expertise to assist in review or supplement the evidence presented by the applicant and received during a public hearing. The cost of such assistance shall be borne by the applicant according to the terms of an escrow account set up at the time the application is submitted as listed in the permit fee scheduled established by the board of select persons. So maybe we could chunk that out. Copy, paste, edit a few words
Yeah.
to then apply to the section that is solar.
Because it does sort of talk to what paragraph A you're talking about, about the board setting that.
Yeah.
The fee.
Right.
Need to provide for the escrow, which is a way to ensure that the money is paid upfront, so we don't get stiff.
Precisely. Yeah. Steve.
I just wonder whether you could include a provision and say that if the technical assistance doesn't cost as much as the fee that was charged for this kind of review that the money will be returned.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty standard. Something like that should.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great idea.
Yeah, I'm surprised that isn't actually in the Yeah, I thought it was too.
So did you guys say that's on page five?
It's on page eleven. Yep.
Section.
It's like five dot five B. It's under additional information and studies.
So what about if it's the other way around? Had the consultant is more than the escrow account, what happens then? Do we have to wait provision there for that?
Yeah, no, I think the money should be returned to the applicant.
Yeah, well, she's talking about.
Oh, the opposite of, I think the yeah.
Reflect.
Well, and that's why, you know, this at least suggests reviewing and amending the fee schedule on an annual basis.
Steve.
Could you say something about the actual costs? You know, you're talking about.
Real, real cost. Real cost like.
Yeah, the actual cost of the review.
And I think that's fair, but you wouldn't know that upfront.
Right.
So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Rather than.
Yeah, no, this shouldn't be.
Succeed like you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this shouldn't be a money making operation for the town.
Right.
But I agree, you know, that, you know, I mean, the best I think you can do is have an amount that's adequate to hire somebody, get them on board. And then once the scope of the work is required of them is better known how many hours billable hours you need to pay for. Then.
So then we'll send an estimate before we.
Well, yeah, an estimate. That that's probably a good, you know, I mean, that that's part of the town's procurement procedures, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
You you could word it somehow, put it in as official deposit towards that engineering thing with language of that, that they must cover anything or any origins above that.
Yeah.
Or we can return anything under that.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it, too.
That's a good way.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Dan. Good idea.
I'm gonna head out shortly. When you guys get to the point when you're talking about park zones, things like that. So so I'll make sure that the select board has a standing invite, running invite, or anytime we send out
Yeah.
the packet will include the and like I said, when you're when you're talking about the runoff or something, get to that point. So the big concerns for over there for all the residents having that water come down over there and then then get stopped with having to fix their property as well. So there's got to be some kind of, if if this creates a problem, they're going to have to ask in some way for them to have to like get the remediation done by the company that did the project. Something.
Okay.
That was
And they were pretty vague on
Yeah.
on the measurements, they didn't have a scale with them. They were.
Yeah, using a pen or something.
Oh, this fence is only two thousand feet long. And oh, no, it's eight hundred feet from the lake. And we're looking at the garden. That doesn't drive.
It's surprising. Soul work. We use soul stuff. So I think we definitely had our consultants because if they've got soul, they're working for that. And they're working in their best interest.
Absolutely.
Right, right.
Dan, before you go, I thought that during the select meeting, there was a comment about the salt permeation from the.
Yeah.
Okay.
They were worried. The stuff being stolen. The state's not dealing with this. Other solving issue. So.
So I don't know.
Bruce said, he's not cutting all that stuff over there. Eventually, salt and sap travel that way. Trees or anything else. For now, so I don't know. That's that's going to have that engineering study. That's the last thing we want to do is that. It's all that way. Can't make that wall.
Yeah.
That was mentioned and that stuck with me, so.
I didn't pick up on that tonight.
Bruce, well, Bruce may have mentioned it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
He he made a big point about that and you know, I didn't want that to be lost.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, so we were talking about A there, right?
Yes, so so just so you guys know, I think what I'm going to spend a large part of tomorrow doing is creating a document with all of this language and and so for instance, on that paragraph, I'll go to page eleven in the ordinance, pulls pull out the language, plop it in, and then make some tweaks to it, and then you guys can review it at the next meeting.
Okay. That can work. That can work. Because if that works that way, we'll be looking at it as if it's in the ordinance structured the way it is now, focused on solar.
Right, yeah, and for each for each portion, I'll put what section of the ordinance this would go in. And maybe make a suggestion is that it could be paragraph C or.
Okay, all right, thanks. So bearing that in mind, Anthony, do we just want to not spend any more time on sections, what's called six specific application requirements, just what do we want to do? Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
How really you want to go.
So what what would you like to do next? I mean, I know we have.
I don't think we're going to make it through the rest of the the application requirements. I don't think we're going to make it through the rest of um the uh application requirements. Um, but but I I do have two thoughts uh before, you know, we leave that. One is uh it shows up both here as an application submission requirement and then in term, um, and then in the uh on the next page as well, uh, and that is the visual impact assessment.
Yeah.
And um and it relies uh very heavily on that viewshed model. Anthony, I was wondering, and I don't know how the others feel about that, this is something I don't know anything about, I know there's a section in D E P that works with it all the time, but I was wondering, um, maybe Katie Cog could come and do a demonstration of that model for us? Or if they don't have that capability, maybe they could recommend somebody that does, so that we can actually see what we would get in an application under that requirement um and whether that's adequate. Um, and I actually have a a legal question that goes hand in hand with it. Here's the legal question.
Okay.
It's a good thing you have that attorney on retainer.
Well, don't you live with one?
Yeah, but she gave up her license.
It seems to be convenient.
By the way, she concurs with the legal opinion that you got from M and A, because that's what you told me when I asked her, so anyway, the uh, and the legal question is this. If you're doing, my understanding of these models is it it can simulate what um a tower or a solar uh farm will look like from different vantage points.
Mm hmm.
And clearly, one of them will be the Belgrade Lakes, and the legal question is can we protect that portion of a Belgrade, one of the Belgrade Lakes, say Great Pond that's actually in Rome? Because it's a different municipality. So then, and if it's any consolation, in-house uh council doesn't know the answer to that.
So so what you're saying then is if a if a if one of these facilities was built in Belgrade, should we be taking into account whether folks in Rome or Mount Vernon?
Yeah, or or can can we, even can we?
Or but like say Great Pond itself, can we consider the pond itself because it's all one entity, and if we're on the pond, whether it be in Rome or Belgrade, we're looking up at the solo panel.
Right.
It's all one entity, Great Pond is right, and just happens to be in.
I mean.
It's a, it's a, yeah, I mean, it's a common, it's a common resource for all the towns. Um, but you know, that boundary, that town municipal boundary that is in the middle of it, maybe matters, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would think it might matter, yeah. Well, I would think that um you may give views beyond that borderline.
Yeah, definitely, but you know.
Maybe not on.
So, for example, if the model shows that it won't be uh a solar farm won't be visible in the Belgrade portion of Great Pond, but will be visible from the opposite shore, which is in Rome, can we deal with that?
Or can Rome, can Rome sue, sue for that?
Can't.
I don't know.
Some other town.
I I have no idea, because you know, um, think about other ordinances, I don't know of example where we're protecting another municipality.
And to take that even further, you know, if we have a commercial development review ordinance of application and that five hundred foot perimeter around it goes into another community, we have to work that community so that they can participate in the process if they so.
But that's the key, they get to participate in the process, it doesn't mean that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm, where I was going with that is, I wondered if if the viewshed analysis says that, yes, this is going to be visible from another municipality, should we, could we, and maybe this is something you included in the ordinance, alert them so that they can also participate.
Well, I mean, I think that that's appropriate, um, uh, but you know, I think in terms of where the rubber meets the road, in terms of our decision-making, how can we consider that, you know, can we, or can we consider that, the fact that I mean, if it's impacting Belgrade waters or Belgrade portion of the Great Pond, Great, Great Pond, um, is, you know, is that the limit of our authority? Uh, it's really good, you know, I guess that's another portion of that legal question.
Yeah, because you're in the same situation on Mesclonsted.
Yeah, or Long Pond.
Or Long Pond.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, all really, and so and I mean, I it it would, it makes common sense to me that if it's visible from a lake, regardless if it's Rome or Belgrade or Mount Vernon or wherever it is, then we should take that into consideration if we have the authority to do that.
Yeah.
But.
So in regards to the viewshed analysis, is that part of the technical review?
It it's it's a submission requirement on.
I I I I know, but but, I mean, again, I've already heard complaints about what's being proposed uh along the Oakland Road that they say it's not going to be visible from, you know, these distances, and and people are sort of poo-pooing that because it's their own viewshed analysis.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so and so should the viewshed analysis be part of the of the technical review done by an independent party as opposed to.
Yes. I agree.
I would think we'd want it.
Yeah.
Well, it kind of gets down to, you know, what becomes the the burden of proof for the applicant. I mean, we could always hire to prove it.
Other costs, other expense.
At their expense, you know, that would, you know, I mean, I think that's the role of the of a consult working for the town is to um, proof and give us comment, assist us in our review and comment on the application.
So maybe the technical review then, the viewshed analysis is part of the technical review by a third party.
That's right.
I think so.
Yeah, well, they have to give us stairs to as a requirement of the application.
Yeah, right, I mean, I, we shouldn't be waiting this for the applicant.
No, no, and I'm not suggesting that at all. Uh, uh but I was just wondering if we want that, instead of the applicant submitting their own viewshed analysis, if we want that, then might be the first part. That, yeah.
I think the applicant do it, but we should have the authority to have our
Okay.
Technical person review and tell us whether.
Yeah, because.
Whether it's bunk or not.
In my experience, and and maybe this will be different, but you know, these modeling kinds of, regardless of what you're modeling, assumptions are key, and and uh and we may, I I may not be able to figure it out that there's some flaws in the assumptions, but we might need a technical expert that does.
I, the way I see is that if we ask the applicant to render their review, and then we ask another one, independent one, that with that, the applicant has paid twice.
Well, but but that's not what I was suggesting, what I was suggesting is, instead of them hiring their own person, just like we do with the independent thing.
That's right.
We, we, you know, we choose, we.
Just one, one time.
And they pay for it.
I I I think we need a clean line of responsibility, I I mean, the applicant has the burden of proof, so they need to do the viewshed, they need to hire the consultant that does the viewshed analysis, but we are able to hire on, as part of the review, playing board review process, we have somebody on our side of the table that um they're paid for, but is working for the town of Belgrade and helping us review that viewshed analysis and and ensure, shape, giving it a good shape to make sure it holds technically.
Yeah.
But that that way you're making them pay twice is what I'm getting at. They do the labor twice, they do it on their own, and then we ask them to do it again with another person.
No, we're not asking them to do it a second time, we're asking our consultant to review it on our behalf.
They don't actually have to do everything.
Yeah.
Reviewing what they did.
I mean, it would be no different than if they did, they'll be doing a stormwater uh runoff calculations and 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 modeling and um and our engineer will review that, give it a good solid technical shake and ensure that it is, you know, the assumptions are good, the analysis is good, uh, that they follow the proper procedures, E P methodologies, et cetera, um, so, uh, you know, our role is review. Their role is to
To ring it up.
Do the applicant, prepare the application.
Okay.
So as luck would have it, I am on a Zoom call tomorrow with Jill Breedwood from Katie Fox, I'll ask him about sort of.
Yeah, so.
What they can, how they can educate us about the viewshed analysis.
That would be really helpful.
That would be good. Steve.
I have a question that maybe you could uh consider this in your discussion tomorrow. Whether they can provide a list of firms in Maine that would be able to do this kind of analysis.
That may, and maybe, maybe beyond their purview, but.
Well, if, I mean, I, I'm not an expert in this in any way, but uh I just wonder, are there companies that can actually fulfill this kind of requirement, especially down here, the visual impact assessment? Part three requires a design professional trained in visual assessment procedures. I mean.
I don't know the answer to that specifically, Steve, except to say that this um um field, if you will, on was developed um or brought to Maine, let's put it that way, it was used elsewhere driven by wind power. Wind power applications that go to the E P at the state level.
Okay.
So they're done on a regular basis for those kinds of assets, which is, you know, in some respect, probably a little easier, but uh I can only tell you, uh, the only other thing I can tell you about it is um, I don't even remember how this came up, but um Pat Donahue, who um uh from Belgrade Lakes Association, he and I were talking, and when that cell phone tower was um proposed on the mountain overlooking Long Pond and Great Pond, um, they hired, they hired a consultant from Yarmouth and and I believe it was a woman, and she was a landscape architect, who's her basic training, then she has some kind of certification to do this viewshed analysis. But, you know, I I think that's a legitimate question, you know, our our consultants out there that are readily available to the applicant.
Right.
I I think the answer is yes, just because, because we're not breaking new ground here, but it's a good question to ask.
No, that makes sense with the wind, uh. There must have been some analysis like that done.
Yeah, because D E P's dealing with, been dealing with wind for a long time.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and under the cycle, I don't know. Viewshed analysis, uh, twenty years ago, maybe. Building that's on Route One, as you come into Freeport, towards, oh, beans, where's your honor? I mean, ninety-five. When you get that big white barn.
Oh, um. Garment, the the garment?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's Yarmouth.
No, oh, I'm sorry.
I know the one you're telling me about. Coming up the interstate and just before you get off the exit to go down toward Beans and that way, there's a, almost like a barn shape.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, it's like a mall.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Peter, one last, my other question or possible suggestion or or is um uh, like I said earlier, um both for Katie Cog's uh uh, application requirements, and then uh also for um their standards of approval. I personally found them lacking, and so in that February seventeenth document, uh, a lot of it, it's now not applicable to, you know, because it dealt with exemptions and applicability, but in terms of the actual review uh standards or the review criteria and performance standards. Uh, that, um, I don't know, would it, you know, if you want me to just bring those up as we're discussing them, or if that's something you'd like me to reformat and put back into the board packet, it's been in the board packet once before as a outline, the supplement. You know, so for example, Dan brought up, um uh, this is what did he bring up, he brought up on the uh uh, standards for um vegetative screening, you know, I I personally think they need to be more stringent than what Katie Cog is recommending. Um, the uh, uh, at the board, a select board, uh, there was discussion of not wanting to be able to look to to control the amount of of the break through any bit uh screening uh for the access road and and the uh and the utility lines, uh, and those are things that I had given. So they may not be the way we want to go, but um I don't know what, how you want to how you want me to present those.
Yeah. Um, do you think if we presented them as an outline again, uh, maybe because there might be a couple of things that are taken out now, talked about some of the things?
Yeah, no, it would be easily done, and and I could send it to Anthony, and it could be put back into the uh um, into the packet so that everybody could review it, I mean, that would be the advantage.
Yeah.
So that people could review it in advance of the meeting rather than kind of like what happened today, where we got to, you know, read it and digest you you full extent of read it and digest it as we go, I mean, I'll do whatever the rest of you want me to do, but.
Yeah, I I like the idea of an outline, because then it presents it like it would be in the uh current ordinance or ordinance revised, right?
Okay.
So if you would be so kind.
That worked for you, Anthony?
It does.
Yeah, I'll I'll forward that to you, I I need to make some edits to it to, in terms of deleting the portions that are no more, aren't relevant anymore.
Okay, so, so are we good then for for what we've done?
Yes, so when I get done with uh doing a a new document, you guys take a look at, I'll send it out as soon as it's done, so you have plenty of time to look at it for the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Um, which I will not be at, by the way, but I'll watch the video afterwards. Um, and then secondly, I mean, you guys got a lot of important work done tonight, and curious what you think about our sharing that with the community, saying, for instance, that hey, this is this is the definition of what we're going to be regulating in the proposed amendments to the commercial development review ordinance, providing the definition of a non-residential solar energy producing facility, just so that the community is sort of in the know as we go through this process.
Well, that's an important subject, uh, topic, I think, um. For me, I think it's, I I mean, obviously, anybody can attend these meetings and and if they wanted to say something, they could, um, you know, at the appropriate time. The uh I I I'm just worried about us having to constantly go back two steps before we commit one step forward. Uh, and I just wonder if the better way to handle the the timing of soliciting public input, I I mean, I would hope that we would have some kind of public informational meeting to do that. Um, when we have a first draft
Yeah.
and have it all together in one package, because I I could see people say, ah, we don't, you know, why aren't you thinking of this, that, and the other thing, and and so then we go back and we're, you know, right at the beginning again, and we never get off square one.
Yeah, see, and and I, I guess my concern, George, was that we get to the end, and then people give us this avalanche of things of, well, why haven't you included X, Y, and Z? And then we got to go back to the drawing board, and so, and so some of the people who are here tonight, who tuned in, I told them, hey, you guys are sincerely interested in this, you need to become engaged in the process now instead of waiting, we have a finished product.
Well, I I'm definitely a big advocate of public input, it it's a question of how you manage it for ma, you know, maximum effectiveness and and efficiency.
Yeah. Craig gets them.
What if we put something out there right now, and then we're referring it to the ordinance, and we get some information that we decide that we want to change it? And it's already out there.
So you 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 think it would be better to get that input now rather than?
No, I think you say hold off, keep your cards close to your vest right now. No, I think you say hold off, keep, keep your cards close to your vest right now.
Mm-hmm, because if you throw it all out there, then later on, we get some information, then we're all inside of, maybe that wasn't right.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, and like we did with the subdivision ordinance.
And, uh, so, I would like, I don't think we should be throwing bits and pieces out there, and I agree with what he says, because it, I can see the whole picture as well.
Mm-hmm.
They're only gonna see parts of it.
Well, I thought that the model that we use for the subdivision ordinance was a good model, and so I do think, because of the high public interest in this, it's gonna be critical that we have one of those public information meetings.
Yeah.
And, and maybe several of them.
Yeah, right.
At which, you know, then we go back to the drawing board and say, okay, is there a place for this suggestion in, in the ordinance?
Well, and the other thing too is, uh, that way we get all the input, in a consolidated period of time, so that, you know, because a lot of times, these comments from the public conflict with one another.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and that way we can kind of weigh those and, and, and balance them, as, as appropriate for whatever they may happen to be, in terms of the subject.
Rich, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah, agree in general about not, putting too much out of whatever, but the idea of letting people know, what it is, what the actual thing is we're working on, uh, you know, kind of like, what is the definition of what we're working on, so that they know, we're doing that, and not six months later, not even know we're working on an ordinance that regulates solar wind power, and this, these are the things that we're not regulating, so that, they kind of know right up front what we're trying to put a rule for.
So what if we just put out just a, a blip of information that just says, you know, the planning board is working on some regulations for commercial solar or non-residential solar energy producing facilities? If you are interested in that, you should plan on tuning in from six to seven on the Thursday, or Thursdays of the.
That will be perfect, just the same.
I, I think so too, yeah, I think it's great idea.
Good.
And, and I wouldn't mind also suggesting that at some point, we, we put in the plug for, stay tuned for times and dates where we have these public informational meetings.
Yeah.
So, let them know.
That's, that's, that's good, Peter.
So, um, I'm glad, I'm sorry, go ahead, Craig.
Glad there wasn't a way for them to, have a spot, the voice, their opinions, the voice.
Well, there is, it's during the speed.
Yeah, but that would, I mean, I have to work on this, it's gonna tie up everything. I mean, to an extent, I mean, the chemical.
Yeah.
Too bad there wasn't a law or like a Facebook, you know, Facebook page.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, um, the lakes committees shared their, their thoughts with you, and, and I know the Burton Woods Road Association is actively engaged in, sending information to, you guys may have already gotten something by now anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm good with just letting them know that we're working on it.
Yeah.
Sarah?
I mean, I would assume that, oh, go ahead, Sarah, you go ahead.
Well, I just, I think I want to hear from everybody is that we're concerned that, we, if we get people in, we're gonna stop the flow, we're gonna, we're gonna flow motion here tonight.
Well, I think, yeah, I think, you know, we had three guests here tonight, and several online, and, and you guys managed to plow right through some stuff, so.
But they were, they were not, well.
And part of that, and part of that is huge responsibility to serve as a, as a ringmaster.
Right, let's try to herd the cats, right, so. All right, so speaking of questions, we do have a question in the chat for tonight's meeting, so I want to make sure we, we hear it and perhaps answer it. The question is from Susan Pangborn to everyone, has there been any consideration whether to make zoning changes, perhaps by a master plan, to allocate certain locations in Belgrade through the use of land, through use of land definitions, that would allow solar farms to be built with a cap on how many comma, and how large? That's your question. So, um,
Well, first of all, we don't have zoning.
That, that was my first, yeah, and I don't want to sound flippant, but we don't have zoning, right, um.
So, so you can't necessarily regulate, so.
Right.
A zone.
Right.
Because we don't have zoning.
So, I don't know that Susan's with us anymore, but she did have that in the chat, so from a process perspective, do, has it been our practice to answer in the chat that's reported, or is it not what we do? I'm, I'm just wondering.
I think, I think the most important thing that you guys do right now is work on the ordinance.
Okay, all right, so we've, we've answered the question, and it's, uh, being recorded.
Is right.
So should.
We, we, we're good.
Well, I think we're good that way, but.
Yes.
For, if she comes to the town and has a question, at least we can reference the reported.
Yeah.
Part, right, I don't want to unfairly burden the town, but that's how, I guess.
Send them to Richard.
See, Richard Greenwood.
Greenwood, yeah. Whether you lost the municipal.
See, maybe she doesn't know that this has been recorded, and that, uh, when she called later, uh, I guess somebody in the office will, will refer to the video.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, so I just wanted to ask a question about process, because I don't want to ignore the question, but we've answered it, and so now I think we can board, so. Okay, um, so I think we've covered a lot of the big things for tonight. Um, next are minutes, right, does everybody have a copy of the minutes? Yeah, okay, super. And, let's see, Pete is not with us tonight, so we cannot. Everybody else that is, wasn't present, then, this year tonight, so we're good. Okay. Any edits or suggestions for the minutes, okay?
Uh, free old business consideration. The, Mr. Alexander proposed, uh, those, Mr. Alexander proposed not regulating any solar facilities with five or fewer roof panels, that's not what I was saying.
Okay, so, so I, and I had trouble unders, following that, that Craig, uh, I had to go back and watch the video, so.
Okay, so it's, um, proposed not regulating any solar facility, any, what I didn't want to regulate was any roof panels, and up to five, ground panels.
Oh, okay, uh, not regulating any solar facilities with roof panels, or up to five ground now.
No, not all, so, what I was proposing, when we were trying to figure out where to start, is not to regulate any, um, roof panels, and up to five ground panels, so they could have roof panels and five ground panels. And then I wanted to regulate six panels to twenty-five panels with just screening, and then start twenty-six panels with our regulations.
Okay.
That's what I suggested.
So, so then if I, if I change this to say, Mr. Alexander proposed not regulating any solar facilities with roof panels, and up to five ground panels, and regulating and with screening arrays, and regulating with screen, well, that's kind of awkward, and, uh, screening arrays with six to twenty-five panels, of what, and regulating with screen arrays with six to twenty-five panels, with the commercial development review ordinance regulating twenty-six plus panels, okay?
Thank you, thanks, Craig. Any other edits? No? Okay, so we have just some minutes, thank you, um, entertain a motion to approve amended, uh, these minutes as amended.
I move the motion.
There you go, motion.
Move.
We have a second, second, any more discussion? All those in favor, so roll call, so Pete, we can't go to, so Craig? Yeah, Sarah?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm in favor. Yeah, and Rich is in, he's in favor, so five in favor, none opposed. All right, um, so that does it, so, we'll call it a night, and, uh, so all this, yeah.
I haven't had dinner yet.
Then I had a question for you, I had a question for you afterwards, Anthony, just saying, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Uh, our secretary, are we, are we in that, that's the giant final? Are we the first?
Uh, so I'll be taking the minutes for tonight, and then we'll, if you know someone who might be interested in listening to you.
No, I don't.
Aren't there many? Uh, okay.
So I move, I move on to more, motion to adjourn.
I thought there was something that Richard needed advice on, or wanted to.
Oh, we can do that off, we can do that offline, yeah.
Okay.
I hope with you a little bit, but.
Okay, then, we can do a quick chat.
So I move a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any, any more discussion? All those in favor? Craig? Sarah?
Yes.
George? Rich? I do in favor, yeah, okay, thank you.
Here, what would you do if somebody said, we want to, I want to discuss this further?
I know, yeah.
You see, I've got the response of the turn. Okay.
Yeah, so Richard, um, and while we have Rich here, maybe that'd be good to get George to consult with them too about something that's online. If you want. Yeah. Sarah, you might have a, you might want to listen to that.
Sure. Yeah, we, uh.
Right, twenty-five, seventy. Two thousand feet, twenty.
Yeah.
And I.
Okay, so if we go, how do you, how do you regulate, regulate that?
You, you're gonna have to replay all that, you know?
You gotta go back seventy-five feet, and it's true, we can't do any expansion over there.
Was it twenty-five?
Right, but once you get back twenty-five feet, you get to the hundred foot, you can do a thou, you can add a thousand, you also, you have to consider the part that's within twenty-five. When you make it careful, but you had, you had.
That's the tricky part.
Hundred feet within twenty-five feet of the water, and five hundred feet of buildings at twenty-five foot distance, you got six hundred altogether. He can add four hundred square feet, assuming it's not out, outgoing somewhere else to the total.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, you can't do anything to twenty-five, but then you get to the thousand square feet, figure out what we've got.
So, Anthony, the question I have was about process, you advise us to be cautious about talking.
Yeah.
Good night, George, thank you very much, good night, good night. Um, and I agree, it'd be, it's good to be, whatever's on the agenda.
Right.
What, that we talked about.
You add another, um.
I know in the, in the past, we have allowed time for.
And that would be fine, but we need to put something on the agenda, and we will do that moving forward.
Yeah.
That just says.
Whatever he's got to do.
Office or update.
Anything like, now that we have the luxury of having a code enforcement officer, it'd be great.
But, but here's, but here's the thing about that is, we need to make sure we're doing that versus going far. With discussing.
Yeah, gotcha.
Because.